The CMCSS study sessions now in session. First item on the agenda is surplus property custodial equipment. Dr. Luna?
Board, the CMCSS policy requires Director of Schools to request the Board of Education declare any school system property as surplus. The district owns the custodial equipment detailed in the attached inventory list. Each of these items has reached the end of the service life, so despite our best efforts, it is no longer viable for repair or use. So in alignment with this policy, we recommend the Board of Education declare these assets retired and removed from the CMCSS inventory for disposal.
Thank you, Dr. Next item is 2024-2025 consolidated budget. First reading, Dr. Luna?
I'd like to ask our Chief Financial Officer, Chris Renaud, to come forward and present the 2425 proposed budget for the first read.
I'm going to go ahead and apologize now, but before I get started in this budget, I just want to take a moment to highlight, this is, a lot of districts, it's been published that 62% of the districts in the state of Tennessee are facing a fiscal cliff. And what's driving that cliff was the introduction of ESER funding. And so there's a lot of concern about how they were going to supplement that funding, what they were going to do about that. And as we get started, I just want y'all to know that we don't have that problem, that we've been fiscally responsible, we've been planning accordingly, and so there's zero concerns with the district funding. With the removal of ESER funding, we've mitigated that, we've planned, we've strategized, and we're going to come out of that significantly better than the rest of the districts in the state of Tennessee. So I'm very proud of that. I also want to highlight, as we get into this budget, that it's been an incredible effort by a lot of different people, from the Director to your Cabinet members, on sacrifices, heavy evaluation, considering alternative solutions and options to funding and revenues, working with the county mayor, working with the county commission, even working, you'll see in this, county departments, so that we can better maximize the Montgomery County citizens taxpayer dollars. And I think you'll see that I'm very pleased, very proud to present this budget. Just wanted y'all to know that. So, it did not come easily. Oh, and as a side note, the Business Affairs team did a fantastic job on getting this together, preparing it, analyzing scenarios, so I'd be remiss not to credit my team for the great work that they put in doing this. So, all right, you know, we've got seven funds to go over, six funds to go over, so we'll go over general purpose. But as another highlight, oh, we'll get to that. So just to give you an overall overview, we're looking at $404 million in revenue for general purpose. We're looking at an expense of $444 million, so you're looking at a deficit, we're operating a deficit of about $40 million. Now, while that may look intimidating, a lot, some of that is going to be covered by carryover from this year's savings into next year, so it's not as big a deficit as what it's forecasting. But as y'all know, everything's getting more expensive. And you know, we have initiatives to support the governor's $50,000 minimum by fiscal year '26, '27, and then we just have competition with external factors on the district, so just wanted to make you cognizant of that. Again, I'm still not concerned, y'all, so don't worry. So just to go over revenue, you can see again, the largest portion is $269 million is from TESA, and then our county's contribution is $132 million, a small portion of federal revenue, and then you see a significant reduction in our non-revenue source, because as I reminded y'all this year, we made the decision based on finance rates to no longer finance computer purchases, which will save an aggregate $4 to $5 million to the district. So where do the increases happen? You see a $12.6 million increase in state revenue. I'm going to discuss, and I have discussed with the county legislative body, an increase in local revenue that I'll get to shortly. You see a reduction in non-revenue sources, again, that's sources that we get when we finance computer or leases. You see a reduction in that as we get out of the debt business. And then federal revenue, again, it's hard for us to forecast that because those won't be awarded until late May, early June, so we just put typical placeholders in there. So as we get over general purpose and look at local revenue, you can see we are looking at going after additional funding through property taxes. And then I'm proud to announce that in combination with the Director and our leadership team and the mayor, he's identified that there's a significant need for us to attract, retain, and recruit special populations teachers. So he was suggesting an additional $5,000 differentiated pay for our special population teachers. So in doing that with approximately 400 teachers that we have, that's $2 million, so we've added that to our request for an increase in property tax. And just as a side note, for the audience and for the board, we have not asked for a property tax increase in over 16 years. So this is the first increase that we've asked, so if you do a costed average over that, it's less than a 1% increase per year, so. Local option has not seen the growth rate that we've continued to see, as everybody's seen inflationary pressure, recessions that have gone on in the market. So where we historically have projected a 4% increase, in alignment with the county Finance Director, we're forecasting a 2% growth in local option sales tax. And then under state revenue, again, you see the TESA improvement, and I'm happy to say initially the growth rate was 3.13%, and while that was a challenging, TESA, the Tennessee Department of Education, went and reevaluated their socioeconomic classification, and then identified there may be some errors in their calculations, so they're reverting back to previous years, which added an additional $4 million for our TESA contribution. So where that tends to go throughout, in the next future years, it'll be hard to forecast, but they've identified it as an issue, but just to understand, that reduction in socioeconomic could have cost the district $4 million in additional revenue, which would have put us in a difficult spot to be completely transparent, so. And then again, these are best estimates for vocational, you see a reduction in that. That's because vocational has been primarily funded through the innovative school models, and that's a three-year grant for $11 million, and we are doing our best to absolutely spend every dime of that. So, and y'all probably, I heard today, we had our first graduates out of our drone class, so that was very exciting out at West Creek, so, and we're continuing to look at aviation and other options, so we're using that CTE funding to the best of our ability. And then you see a reduction in state funds, again, we won't know those until we get awarded, and I'd rather hedge on the low side to make sure that we're not, I'd rather under-budget than over-budget. Here you can see federal revenues, you see a $411,000 reduction. We are getting an increase in JROTC, and again, contributions, we won't know till we get throughout the year, so that's something that we'll update as we go throughout the year, so. And then insurance recovery, Lord help us, I'm not trying to prepare for any disasters or forecast any disasters, so we'll just get that, as that money comes in, we'll record it as revenue, because we can't predict what particular issues we'll have. I do expect some upside to that based on their tornadoes and some of the wind damage that we had, as we're still processing those claims. All right, so overall, you can see the beginning fund balance is $65 million. Again, about $15 million of that is cost savings from this year, primarily through open positions that we've had, and then we're also seeing an increase, as we've seen throughout this year, we see an increase in property and liability, and then also us bringing on Kirkwood Elementary School. So we're increasing that reserve to make sure that we have that. And then again, you see for, assigned for education for technology, that's a reserve that we use to make the payments on computers from our leases, but guess what, when you don't have leases, you don't have to reserve payments, so. But all in all, starting out the year on a healthy fund balance, but you'll see with that, so y'all can probably figured it out, with a $40 million deficit, where's that money going to come from? And it's going to come from our fund balance, so. All right, so what are we spending our money on? As everybody probably knows, biggest is salary and benefits. 84% of our budget goes to salary and benefits, and then you can see on the chart and in your notes what the additional expenses are, contracted services, supplies and materials. And just so you're aware, most of the contracted services are supporting our special populations programs. All right, so where's the money going by department? You can see that $201 million goes to our regular instruction, and nearly 92% of all of our expenses go directly to impact students. And then, so by specific item, you can see that the bulk of our budget, $160 million, goes to teachers. And so, and then again, 90% of the budget, this, you'll see these categories cover 90% of the budget, and nearly 92% of them are directly impacting students. So the funding's going to our students to support our student achievement. So, trick question, everybody wants to know, all right? You'll see that $13.6 million is under new positions, and again, let me clarify, me identifying a new position is also migrating ARP, ESER-funded positions to general purpose. So that includes permanent subs, that includes float nurses, a lot of those resources that we'll get into the detail. And then through some interesting conversations, I'm excited to say that the district will be presenting to the county commission a 5% COLA for our employees. So let me put that in perspective for y'all. So five, the average employee with a 5% COLA and a STEP will get a 7% raise. When this budget is passed, notice I said "when," that means our CMCS team members will get a 22.5% raise in the last 24 months, and that is amazing. And that also puts us two years ahead of the governor's schedule to be at the teacher minimum salary of $50,000. And it did come diligently through using last year's, this year's savings to fund cost of living increases for all of our team members, and that was sacrifices. I mean, you'll see that 98% of the items that were through are all salary and benefits, and that we cut expenses to the best of our abilities to take care of our team members. And then you see 5.7 million for computers, and then just a 2% raise for every team member in the district, cost the district $4.2 million. Oh, and as a side note, the 22.5% raise was $56 million. So I'm very excited about that, and I think it does well by our team members, and we're heading in the right direction. So when I said new positions, I just wanted to get a better, give y'all a better picture of that. 4.8 million of that is just transferring ESER positions to general purpose. And again, y'all have to, y'all, ESER gave us the ability to see what we needed, what was effective, and so out of all the positions that we had in ESER, we identified 4.8 million was what we needed to support our students, and so we're choosing to roll those into general purpose. We add an additional $4.7 million on top of sped resources. Kirkwood Elementary just opening costs $2.2 million. Growth, where we're adding additional teachers to support the 600-plus students that we get every year, and special population is 1.3 million. We're also including teacher initiatives at half a million, and then just overall, you see new positions is only 400,000. And to put it in the perspective, the last three years, on average, new positions have been somewhere around $3 to $4 million. So we're focusing on retaining the staff we have, leveraging that, and using that to the best of our ability. So where's most of the money increases going? You see regular instruction, special education, operation of the plant, obviously when you bring on a new campus, there's more associated costs with that, but things are getting more expensive for us to operate our schools, regular instruction support, human resources, I'll get to that in a second, but human resources, and then Office of the Principal, so, and again, 90, more than 90% of the funding is going directly to impact students. So by object, the biggest increase is the COLA and STEP for our teachers at $11.6 million. So, but you can see where the rest of the contributions are going, again, directly impacting students. So let's go over each individual department, I promise to go quick, and let me go ahead and preface this. With a STEP and a COLA, you should see at a minimum a 7% increase in salaries, and then the same thing with benefits, because as salaries go up, so does social security, so does Medicare. And then we also had a premium increase on our medical plan, so what that means is, while the team members pick up 3%, the district picks up the largest portion of that, because we pay anywhere from 75% to 80%. So on regular instruction, you see an increase of $7 million, salaries 10.2, new positions over 4.3 of that, primarily permanent subs, growth teachers and ELL teachers, and then the STEP and the COLA just for the regular instruction department was $6 million. Y'all are killing me. So alternative school, again, not, it's well within the range, and again, as I noted, when you see a reduction in overall expenses, it's because they offset that with non-salary and benefit items. Special education, you see $7.2 million increase, 5.9 of that was salaries, 3.4 was new positions, we're adding a sped stipend, that's where we compensate our special populations teachers for carrying additional workloads, we're adding eight additional SLPs, special populations teachers, we're adding sped EAs, and then adding resources to Kirkwood Elementary, so, and then the STEP and the COLA was 2.5 million. Vocational education, you see a reduction there, that's nothing to be concerned, that's us spending down the innovative school grant models. Does that make sense to everyone? So we want that to go down as we continue to spend, so. Under student services, again, normal, normal, within range of what we'd expect for the STEP and the COLA. Health services, you see an increase of $670,000, that's all primarily salaries, and the largest portion of that is we identified the need for eight additional float nurses, who are also, we're in ESER, so we're moving them to general purpose. Other student support is well within the range, 3.68%, regular instruction, 3.72, so that's within the STEP and the COLA. So again, they've offset some of those salary increases with the reduction in other non-salary and non-benefit items. Alternative school, 4.31%, you see an increase in employee benefits, that's somebody picked up our healthcare plan, or we're forecasting someone to do that. Special education support increased by $627,000, 503 of that was salaries, 444,000 of that were new positions, an IDEA specialist, behavior coordinator, and then occupational therapist assistant, and occupational therapist, and then a small margin on STEP, COLA, and market analysis. Vocational education support, again, continuing to spend down the innovative school model grant. Technology, you see an increase of $329,000, that was primarily salary, and the big portion of that was STEP and COLA, but a small margin was market analysis for our technology team members, because technology members are becoming more valuable in the marketplace, as everybody's probably aware. Technology classroom instructions, you see an increase of $699,000, that's 645 of that was contracted services, and that's associated with Wi-Fi's and bus Wi-Fi's and hotspots, those were being funded out of ESER, and we're moving, migrating those to GP, because we found that being added value to our students. Adult education is within range for the STEP and COLA. Board of Education, very marginal improve, increase in expenses. Primarily trustees commission, as you get in more money, you have to pay a higher commission rate, so just so you are aware of that. Director of Schools within the STEP, there is some, there is a lot of departments within the Director of Schools, communication, legal, continuous improvement, and there's some additional requests for PD development, and you'll see that, I meant to say that earlier, you'll see a consistent investment in our team members, and I'm very proud of that. By investing in professional development, they're becoming better equipped to help us address the needs and continue to drive improvement throughout the district. Printing and materials, you see an increase of $150,000, $75,000 of that is for new copiers and leases. We heard a big need for the high schools and middle schools. The policy used to be that the district would sponsor one printer or one copier, and there are some districts that we're having to cover there, so we've adopted a new policy to support our high schools and middle schools, that each will be having two district-paid copiers throughout the rest, for the, through the academic school year, so. So if any of them are listening, we heard you. Office of the Principal, it's the STEP and COLA driving the majority of the increase. Business Affairs, it's within margins for STEP and COLA. Textbook process and distribution within the margins. Human Resources, I told Melissa I wasn't going to say this, but you'll see a significant increase in salaries and benefits for our HR department, but that's because the $2 million that we're allocating for the differentiated pay for our special populations teacher is funded through this account, so. Operations of the Plant, you see a $2.85 million increase in operation of the plant, 826,000 of that is because new positions, adding the custodial staff for Kirkwood Elementary School is a big portion of that, and then we did have some regional custodial supervisors that were funded through ESER, that was a big need, and that allowed us flexibility and float, so we're transferring those to GP. Utilities continue to go up, bringing on a new campus with Kirkwood Elementary School, but then the cost of utilities continue throughout the district to go up. And then insurance premium, we're forecasting an increase in insurance premium from our actuary, so it's $312,000. Maintenance of the Plant, the increase is within the STEP and the COLA. Earlyhood, childhood education, you see the reduction, we've been able to leverage some of it with St. B and, or our St. B facility, Early Learning Center that's opening, we're able to leverage some of our voluntary pre-K funding to use that, so that's why you're seeing the reduction in that, is we optimize staff out of one location, we can leverage resources to get better value for our dollar. So debt service, I'm proud to say continues to go down, and I'm happy to say next year that should be zero. And so the school will no longer be acquiring any debt through the form of leases, so I'm really excited about that, and then when you get rid of debt, you don't have to worry about debt service, so I'm excited about that. And then interfund transfer is just whenever we take money from, transfer money from a different fund to GP, and those are just forecasted as a needed basis. So overall, ending fund balance, again, we're using a lot of fund balance, which is okay, because we're, that fund balance is built up through this year's current savings, but we're forecasting to end fund balance at $25.6 million. That still is above, it's above the statement on threshold, and I'm sure the Director and the senior leadership team will do everything to continue to improve that margin. And again, all the reserves will stay, continue to be the same, and so again, we're still healthy, and I think it's a great, I think it's fantastic what the district is doing to take care of our employees and retain the employees that we have. So that's general purpose. Do y'all want me to ask questions on each fund or wait till the end? Okay. All right, federal budget, this one's easy, y'all like this one. Federal budgets, what I love about them is you just have to spend what you get. So what we're forecasting to get is $24 million, there is a reduction, obviously, of $30 million, ESER's going away, because we've got to spend it or we lose it, so we're planning on spending the $22.5 million. IDA, we're forecasting, we did get, we did get notice of a reduction in our hard cost reimbursement, so we're forecasting that not to get that next year, that is a state allocation, and so we're just budgeting, we're not planning on having those funds. Title I, we're seeing a $1.7 million reduction, and then ESER II completely goes away. So again, these are just all that, remember, any dollar I get from federal revenue has to be allocated to a specific account, so you can see where they're allocated in your sheet, in your packets. And then the big thing, y'all like this, I changed something. So the big thing about federal is to make sure I spend what I get, and so if y'all noticed, I put the expenditures, and on the bottom, I put the revenues, so y'all can double-check my math. So, child nutrition, it's staying fairly flat. We don't know what USDA will reimburse us for, so we don't put a number in there, that's something that we update throughout the year, so that's the only reduction that you see in $531,000. All right, the biggest increase, so again, you see a reduction in revenue, overall expenses are reducing by $250,000, because we're adding additional cafeteria staff for Kirkwood Elementary School. But overall, expenditures are less than fund balance and revenues, and that we're ending at a healthy fund balance as required by USDA. Transportation, revenues, to forecast, again, just as a reminder, we use TESA funding to support transportation, it's actually paid out of GP, but it's just an accounting that we have to follow, so passing that 10%, that increase that we're forecasting in property tax over to transportation, and then you see Tennessee's investment in student achievement adding an additional $2.2 million, beginning fund balance of $4.6 million, total revenue is at $23.4 million. Largest increases are, the total expense increase in transportation is $1.9 million. The biggest part of that is driving our bus drivers COLA and STEP of $678,000, and I want to make y'all aware of something, our bus drivers, beginning July 1st, first year, will make over $21 an hour. And if you rewind two years ago, it was $16 an hour. And so I'm hoping that that gives Norm and the Transportation Department the support they need to attract top talented individuals. He's getting frustrated with me, because he has to update his sign every year. But we're excited about that, as y'all can see, our bus driver performance and attendance has been continually going up, and we believe that this is going to get us in the right direction and the right, the right compensation range. And then mechanics, COLAs and STEPs coming at $80,000. But the biggest expenses, y'all may be aware, is the county is transitioning over to a new communication system on a new radio and a new frequency that allows broader scope, more clarity, we will no longer have significant dead spots, and a part of that will be our investment into that system on our buses, so we're allocating, it's a $2 million project, but I've made, Norm has graciously sacrificed just doing half of it this year and half of it the next year, so we're only increasing expenses, because if we were to pay for it this year, you'd see a further reduction in fund balance, so. And we think it's a great strategy, again, we'll continue to go after grants that we can get to offset that, but it's definitely in need, and then that'll also prevent any dead spots in the district with our communication system, which is fantastic, so. Again, fund balance is at the state minimum requirement of 3%, so. Extended school budget, we haven't got our allocations yet, in fact, I think we're going to get the allocations at the end of this week or early next week, but again, I couldn't wait to present this to y'all. So again, same thing, we're forecast to get, and this is just for July school, we've already been funded for June, just so y'all are aware, I did that this time last year, but we're, so this is just funding for July, $1.3 million. And just for the record, this will not cover all of extended school. We absorb a lot of that through either grants or through general purpose, so, but this is just our allocation from the state for summer school. So big thing, again, whatever I get, we have to allocate, so you can see the different apartment, departments that it's allocated and their appropriations, and again, still trying to improve, y'all. You'll see what the expenditures are, and they should always match the revenues, and so the revenues are at the bottom of your page, and so we're netting out to zero, which is the goal. All right, this one's going to be my fun one, okay? So through collaboration with the Director of Schools, operations, senior leadership team, the mayor, and various departments, the school is asking again for, long story short, is asking for roofs and HVAC, which are the two biggest expenses that we have. The third biggest expense that we have, in case y'all weren't aware, is paving. And miraculously, it only took me three years, but I realized that we have a paving department in Montgomery County. And so typically, you know, when we go into capital projects budgets, you know, we ask for various different things, and year over year, we've done it, we've put in there and we've sourced paving projects, we put in there, requested money under our site-wide projects for paving, and we've paid vendors from Atlanta, from Memphis, from Nashville, from Kentucky, we've paid vendors all over the world to pave our roads. And this year, through collaborations with the mayor's office and the Director and the operations team, is we're going to partner with the highway department to figure out a creative solution in what we're doing now, and in that, the school system will request less capital and then seek support of the highway supervisor to pave our roads. So, and it's a win for Montgomery County, because from an outside perspective, in, if you outsource any, if you go to a third party, you're going to pay anywhere from 30% to 40% margins that are, that are just profits, right? And why not give those back to the taxpayers of Montgomery County? So, so you'll see, through negotiations and aggressiveness, we're going to ask for $9.8 million in capital projects, again, with the caveat that it could be 12.8, depending on how well the county highway supervisor and us get along, but the mayor's doing a great job in negotiating that. So we're continuing dialogue, see where the options are, what the availability is, but we feel pretty confident that this will help save the citizens of Montgomery County significant money. So again, 9.8 million is just going into building improvements, and in your deck, you'll see, I can't even read that, sorry, y'all, you'll see, you'll see improvements at East Montgomery, Ringgold Elementary, St. B Early Learning Center, where our pre-K center's going to be, Moore Elementary, Glen Ellen Elementary, and Northeast Elementary, and highly investing in the, in the infrastructure that we need to keep our students dry and to keep our students comfortable through HVAC or through roofs. And then again, you see that part in red, that's the 3 million that we're negotiating on. So, but again, I feel very confident that the, that the commission and the mayor and the highway supervisor are going to help us come up with an amicable solution that does to the best benefits of the citizens of Montgomery County. With that, I'm done, y'all. Questions?
Mr. Nelson?
Yes, good evening, and thank you for that detailed presentation, I really appreciate it, you always do a very good job with that. I do have a question, however, looking at the sped, special education, and for that budget this year, are there new initiatives that have been implemented for this next year? And were there other initiatives that weren't taken up because of budgeting or some things of that nature?
I'm going to defer that to either the Chief Academic Officer or the Director of Schools, sir.
So...
Red.
Okay, thank you, sorry, I have the same problem. So for a lot of that funding, we have been having to contract a lot of our employees because there weren't eligible employees for a variety of services that our students needed, like speech, but now we've been able to make enough connections with Austin P, and we have students coming through those pipelines, and it is obviously more efficient for us to hire, hire, train, and retain our own employees than to continue contracted services. Additionally, we've seen an... Um, additionally, we've seen an increase in needs for our students and we want to make sure that we have enough employees on hand to meet the needs of the students and, um, the diverse populations that we're seeing.
And were there projects that you had to pass on for this year for special education?
Honestly, sir, they're just based on student needs. So it's really nothing new other than, than just meeting the needs of our students.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayberry?
It's just for the public's knowledge, um, Chris is gracious enough to meet with us ahead of time and go through the budget. So I want to thank you for that because we were able to kind of deep dive it and talk about it. But so a lot of my questions were answered then, but I just want to highlight a couple of things, um, based on what we, we talked about. Um, but I just want to say, I'm excited about seeing the special population teachers getting five hundred dollars more a month. I think it's great, it's going to help recruit, um, and better stabilize those positions. So I'm excited about that. I'm excited about the seven percent raise for teachers as well. You know, going to twenty-two and a half percent overall, twenty-four months, it's amazing. Um, I do want you to just say this because I know it gets asked a lot online, but the Kenwood Track, we talked about that as well, um, and that's.
Yes, sir, that contract is in motion and that is going to happen, sir.
Exactly, so I just wanted to say that out loud for anybody watching, the Kenwood Track's going forward and I'm excited for the bus drivers. And by the way, I was thinking about it the other day, um, uh, over our new problems, there used to be a bus with a banner and it's, it's not there, you know? That was a great recruitment. Is it his fault?
Okay, probably.
But thank you.
Mr. Patterson?
Thank you. Uh, thanks again for, Chris, you and your team and, and of course, the, the job that y'all do. I probably missed it. Mental health, do we have anything? Or, or what category does that fall under?
Uh, we have various resources for that, sir, and we're obviously continuing on how we can improve that. So, I mean, Shanda might, Shanda or might be better off at answering that, but we have counselors and, and things like that, but.
So we have counselors, we have an opportunity for our families, um, to reach out to a, a organization called CareSalus where they guarantee that our, um, families can get access to counseling services, um, even if they don't have, um, health insurance. We also have student support coordinators. So we have a lot of positive things going on in the district in regard to that. Yes, sir.
Right, I'm familiar with that, I didn't know if we had increase in, uh, you know, revenue or anything on that. And in years past, we've always had to worry about fuel, uh, the increase in fuel. And of course, as we know now, it's, it's gradually going up. And what, and maybe this is to Mr. Brumley, what do we do to try to prepare for any increase?
Oh, whoa.
In years past, when it really, really jumped up in a hurry?
Well, also too, but let me answer that, but also I want to highlight the CareSalus. We identified that the resources that we have can't adequately possibly supply, take care of all the students that we have. And so that CareSalus is a package that any student is available to use, any faculty, any, any member of our district is able to use that system and they will put them directly in contact with a counseling resource that, uh, they can work through. And so that's a fantastic initiative that we started this last year. So that's why you're not seeing an increase in guidance counselor and things like that just because of the bandwidth. And plus the market is making it, you can't find counselors now, sir, because they're going into private practice because they can make significantly more money. And so, but back to yours, Norm has done a fantastic job, sir. Yes, fuel will always continue to be, uh, there's significant variations in swing and Norm is very good about asking for budget amendments when they go up and not asking for budget amendments when they go down. But, you know, we've had, sir, we're looking at electric buses, you know, we have half of our fleet, maybe half of our fleet is propane as well, which that, those sort of offset the increases. So believe it or not, when gas goes up, propane tends to go down and then the inverse is opposite. So we're, we're highly leveraged on that, but also we continue to buy in high volumes. And, you know, we negotiate those contracts as quickly as we can. But with the, uh, Bus Depot, they've been very good about leveraging and arbitraging those, those, those spikes, sir. So only when it hits four dollars or something have we not forecasted that. But that's also something that we continually will monitor, sir. And if there's an increase in that, we'll offset that through another expense.
Thank you.
Mrs. Pace?
I just had a quick question concerning the career ladder reduction fund. Was that, is that because teachers are retiring out of the program?
Yes, ma'am, that's exactly what it is. We're, we're seeing a reduction in those that are participating in the, that, that career ladder program.
And to echo what Erin said, appreciated your private tutoring session with the budget. Gained a lot of, um, trivia information that I wouldn't have otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pace.
Ms. Berry?
Our county mayor and the county commission for being supportive of our budget to have the things that we need to meet, to make sure that the students are taken good care of and their education is of quality. And Chris, thank you for taking the time and answering all of my questions one-on-one.
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate you and I'm going to miss you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Would like to thank you for your presentation, it was very detailed.
Thank you, sir.
Next, uh, goal for improve employee retention through enhancing workplace climate and satisfaction policy reference EO three. Dr. Luna?
Yes, I'd like to welcome, um, from our human resource department, Stacy Son. She's an employee relations specialist and has really worked on the employee retention part and she wants to present a little of that data tonight.
Good evening. We are going to spend a little bit of time looking at this specific strategic work goal of maximizing employee capacity and, um, really honing in on looking at that workplace climate and employee satisfaction as it relates to maximizing employee capacity. Some of the data that we will look at tonight is going to be a bit of review. So you've, you've seen some other presentations from my HR colleagues recently. Uh, so we will move quickly over those pieces, but we have some exciting new data to share with you as well. As Dr. Luna Vetter mentioned, my name is Stacy Son and I am the employee relations specialist for the district and I'm very grateful to be here tonight to be able to share this information with you. So let's take a moment just to briefly review some data around, um, retention. You all have seen some data earlier this year from my colleagues, but let's, let's just take a look at that. We know that a big part of the challenge that we have right now in retention is that we don't, uh, for employees and even hiring in, is that we don't have many students as many going into college prep to be a teacher anymore. There just aren't that many students going in that want to go into the teaching field. So when we look at that, um, that just means we have a lower applicant pool of qualified candidates who have that license in hand, ready to teach. So to help us appreciate those numbers, you can see, um, in twenty nineteen, twenty, we only had four teachers on a permit that year. And now just four short years later, we have two hundred twenty-two teachers who are teaching on what's considered an emergency pathway, um, permit, uh, to, to get those people in the classroom in front of our students. So we of course also have, um, the increased employment opportunities, uh, in our city and community that have that competitive pay. So we're, we're kind of fighting with those as well and trying to, uh, recruit qualified candidates. So when we, uh, look at the retention data and you can see we have our certified teachers on the left and then our classified employees on the right. This is nothing new to you, you've seen this information before this year. Um, and so we did have that dip in twenty-one, twenty-two down to eighty-two point four percent and then brought that back up a bit for our teachers last year at eighty-five point five. Uh, whereas our classified staff at the end of last year remained steady around seventy-nine and a half percent. While we won't have our official retention numbers for this school year until October, um, I, I want to share our resignation, our current resignation and retirement data with you to, to give you a kind of a forecast of what we think it's going to look like. So to date, um, we have two hundred and three certified resignations, uh, for this school year compared to three hundred seventy-two total for last year. So that's quite a significant reduction. We also have for our classified staff, two hundred fifty-three resignations to date versus three hundred sixty-three total last year. That doesn't include retirement, so you can see that there, we are on track to have, um, a much lower percentage of our employees retire this year, thirty-two as of today versus a total of sixty-one last year. And for our classified staff, we have forty-five retirements submitted versus, uh, sixty-five total for twenty-two, twenty-three. Of course, we still have a few weeks until the end of, and end of our school year, but we're very, uh, hopeful to see these retention, uh, numbers go up this year. So to better understand why employees leave their positions and, and also to be more proactive in what we can do to keep them employed, last year, the district partnered, um, with Upbeat. And Upbeat is a third-party data collection company that provides, um, survey deployment that specifically focuses on getting feedback for workplace satisfaction. So this year, um, our survey was administered in the fall and the spring and that was the same as last year. This year, we expanded and extended that to our department staff. So last year, it went out to only school-based employees. This year, we added our department employees that are not school-based, so our transportation, our central services, south, central, central office. Um, and that, again, that's twice a year. So the way the survey is set up, depending on your employee group, there are between fifty-three and seventy-three questions in eighteen to twenty-one categories. So as you might guess, the teacher survey has, um, more extensive questions. So that one's a little bit longer than our classified staff because it just digs a little bit deeper into what their work is every day with students. So after each deployment of the survey, when those results come in, our school principals do have the opportunity to meet with an upbeat coach, to look at their data, review that, kind of dig deep into their school data and then work on setting some action plan goals for moving forward. Our most recent survey was deployed March twelfth through twenty-fourth, so we're excited to share that current data with you tonight. So let's take a look. In order to get a, a picture, a true picture of our employee satisfaction, it's important that we hear from all employees. So one of our goals as we administer the upbeat survey is to increase the number of employees who are completing it. We want to hear from everybody. So first, we'll look at completion rates. And you can see on the left, we have our last year's data from the fall and the spring. So you see our certified teachers. We started with eighty-one percent completion, classified at fifty-eight percent of them completing the survey. So if we fast forward to this spring, the most recent data, we can see, um, an increase to eighty-five percent of our teachers completed the survey and sixty-five percent of our classified staff. So we're excited about those increases. We want to keep those going up and hopefully get to, um, as close to one hundred percent as we can. And as I mentioned before, um, our department surveys did not, we did not use those last year. We just began that, we added that in for this year. We did have a, a fairly low, um, completion rate for our department employees, so thirty-nine percent in the fall. But I'm happy to see that we did have, um, an increase in the spring to forty-eight percent. So when we look at the overall satisfaction score, the overall satisfaction score represents, the, the overall satisfaction score represents the percentage of employees that experienced an overall positive, uh, workplace climate. And so we're, if we look at this score in the fall from sixty-five percent on our certified staff and then moving to my, our most recent, we increased to seventy-one. So that's a really, that's a really great increase that we had in our overall satisfaction score. Our classified moved from last year in the fall sixty-nine to a seventy, so we had a small gain there. Um, and then when we look at that department data, we do see that we had a decrease from this year's fall to the spring deployment. But keep in mind, when you look at that, um, completion rate up above there, we went from thirty-nine percent to forty-eight percent. So it may not even be that our score went down. I, I, it could be that we simply heard from more employees, so we were getting a more accurate picture of their feedback. Okay, let's take a look at some specific results for our teachers. These are our highest scoring categories over each of the four deployments. And so you can see across the board, those are equity being our highest scoring category with positive feedback on that, care and commitment, inclusion and instructional leadership. So really excited about these scores and even want to note that these are our highest four areas and even within these areas, we can see an increase in equity, care and commitment and inclusion. All of those did go up even though they were already quite high. Our lowest scoring categories are compensation and career path, work-life balance, autonomy and school safety and order. Um, however, uh, I want to talk just one moment about that school safety and order category. There are four questions that are included in that category. Two of them focus specifically on the physical building itself as regarding school safety. The other two questions focus on, um, student behavior and, and how that relates to school safety. So the scores for the physical building safety were eighty-eight and eighty-five, whereas the scores for safety regarding student behavior were fifty-nine and sixty-one. So we know that is an area of concern and, and we continue to work on that as a district. And looking at these lowest scoring categories, I do think it's important to note, um, that even though they are the lowest scoring categories, there's a significant growth in these top three areas. So really excited about that seventeen-point growth in, uh, compensation and career path. And I'm expecting much bigger growth in our next deployment, especially after that exciting news that Chris brought to us this evening. Um, but we also had growth in work-life balance, a really nice thirteen-point, uh, growth there and also in autonomy. In addition to the upbeat surveys, so those are the surveys that go to our current employees, we also utilize exit surveys in the district. Prior to this year, Upbeat was managing the exit surveys, but we, we decided this year to change that up because we wanted to add questions that gave us more actionable feedback. And we also wanted to be able to have that data sooner. So this year, we changed, uh, the format and how we deploy exit surveys that's managed in-house. Um, and we use a company called Survey Monkey, you've probably heard of that. But these are anonymous surveys that go out to our employees after they leave the district. They receive that, um, that in their personal email within two weeks of their resignation date. And, um, I want to point out in that upper right corner, you can see that, uh, to date, we had a hundred and seven surveys go out. And this is for our teacher surveys. And of those, fifty-four people responded. So we're only seeing about a fifty percent response rate on this, um, from those teachers who have left the district. That's, that's important because I, I don't feel that this is, we, we could say this is not a true representation of all the teachers that resign. However, it is very important data that we look at even with a fifty percent response rate, so we can identify trends and focus on those. So these, um, these three categories were our top categories, um, of highest satisfaction. So you can see the blue and the, and the purple represent satisfied and extremely satisfied. So among the categories, um, they, they're asked questions on a Likert scale in various different categories. So coworkers, benefits and access to information tools and training necessary to do their jobs. These are our highest scoring areas. And then when we look at the areas of highest dissatisfaction, um, and that would be the red and the orange, we see workload, morale and work environment. So, um, again, I just want to remind everyone that this is only about fifty percent of the people who received, um, the survey that decided to complete it. So we've looked at that data on, um, you know, what's going well and what's, what needs some work. Now let's talk about some ways we are working to improve our workplace climate and employee satisfaction. So we'll start with some recognition. So we'll start with some recognition and resources that are available to our employees. HR outreach. So HR outreach is this really great, um, thing that we're doing. We actually started this last year. And the idea is that we want to bring our human resources out to the employees so they don't have to worry about taking off work or coming before they go to work or leaving and rushing out and coming to get to Central Office to try to meet with someone to talk about their questions. The way that works is I send out an email prior, the week prior to being at their building, and they have an opportunity to click on the link and schedule a fifteen-minute meeting with me while I'm in their building. So I stay the entire day, um, and they have a whole week to kind of look at the topics I put in the, in the email and, you know, think about, go home and think about it, what they want to ask, what questions they have. And then they can come in and meet with me, um, and we can talk face-to-face to talk about their questions. So for this year so far, I have met with six hundred and sixty employees in employee outreach. Um, and I've been in all the schools and I was able to get to Central Services South. So the only location I haven't, um, been able to meet with yet is our operations complex. And so I'm working right now, um, with Liz, our, in our transportation department to schedule these. We, as you know, we have several employees in our operations department. So we're working through the logistics of what would work best for me to make sure every bus driver, every mechanic, every router has the opportunity to schedule a meeting with me if they, if they so choose. So within those, um, six hundred and sixty employee meetings, I categorized the topics of the questions that they had when they met with me. And so here you can see, um, the various topics that they wanted to discuss. You will notice that there are more than six hundred and sixty questions here, and that's because most employees have a question, more than one question. They have a que, questions that cover different topics. Um, and in that other category where you see about two hundred, uh, questions falling under other, that's basically anything that they asked me that was not included in any of these other categories. And some examples were how to do a name change, payroll questions, understanding their pay stub, tax withholdings, tenure questions, um, their job title, or, um, if they, um, are interested in doing a transfer request, what does that look like? And also in the other category is included just general feedback for the district and also concerns. All right, so now let's look at some of the ways we recognize and appreciate our employees. We have, of course, our, our Teacher of the Year banquet and celebration. You can see that, that photo there, so exciting. And coming up soon, on May first, we will have our Classified Employee of the Year luncheon to recognize, um, that one classified employee and then all of the other classified employees of the year who were nominated by their buildings. Each month, we also focus on, uh, recognizing a specific group of employees. For example, custodians and educational assistants. Each group will be recognized, um, each month, we have one group that we focus on highlighting. Internally, we have our heart work program. And so employees are able to log into their ClassLink portal and click on the heart work icon. And that allows them an opportunity to type a little memo or thank you note about any other, um, employee in the district. And so that employee would receive a sweet little message saying, you have a heart work and someone's recognized you. Um, so that's a great way to have a little pick-me-up, uh, within the district. And to date, we have eight thousand five hundred seventy-three heart works that have been sent this year. Of course, our communications department does an amazing job of spotlighting our employees and the, and the work that we're doing in the district. We also have, uh, the work milestones and anniversary certificates, so five years, ten years. And, you know, the, employees receive those at their buildings and, and get that recognition. We have our morale grants that are awarded with our partner, um, CMC Education Foundation. And this year, well, let me, let me start with last year's number so you can hear the increase. Last year, we had twenty-six morale grants awarded at thirty-two thousand dollars and a total spent for those. And then for twenty-three, twenty-four, we had thirty-three. So we went from twenty-six, we've increased to thirty-three this year. And forty-eight thousand eight hundred twenty-nine dollars in grants were awarded for those. And this is just a slide that shows a few of the ways that the morale grants were used, uh, by their buildings. Got some goodie carts, um, meals, different treats that the administration goes around and just surprises the employees. So lots of fun ways that that morale grant can be used. We also have our yearly retirement reception to honor those who are retiring from the district. Tenure certificates. Our transportation department really does an amazing job of recognition. They have several, uh, components. They have their perfect attendance award, safety award. They always recognize new hires, quarterly staff appreciation day, end-of-year bonus, and this placard program, which is really fun. So, um, after, um, a bus driver has been with us for six months, they get a placard on the outside of their bus with their name and their photo. After five years, they get an inscription added that they're a senior driver. And then after eleven years, they become a master driver. And of course, we have hundreds of school-level events that, that, that are happening to recognize and honor our wonderful employees. Some of those I did want to mention, uh, I have a list here. So we have the Woot Woot wagon. That's the, the little cart I was telling you about where they just show up and surprise the employees with treats and goodies. Also Sonic Employee of the Week, having food trucks available at the buildings for the employees, PTO lunches, support from Pie Partners. And then recently, we just had, um, one school that hosted a staff cornhole tournament, which I hear was a huge, uh, success. We also know and recognize the importance of exercise and being part of a community and maintaining that healthy lifestyle and lowering our stress. Um, our Alive and Well Department, which is managed by our Safety and Health Department and Human Resources, provides all of our employees an opportunity to enroll in this program at no cost and, and participate in various wellness activities. Um, participants earn points for each activity that they complete. And so this year, we have seventeen hundred fifty-seven employees enrolled. We've had sixty-six group walks, hundred and twenty-four exercise classes, five tournaments, and sixteen monthly challenges. Twenty-eight of our participants have earned more than five hundred wellness points. And this is the one I really love, Hold the Stuffing Challenge. So every year, we host this challenge to kind of stay on track and not lose our, um, waistlines as much as we normally would over the holidays. This year, we had three hundred twenty participants. And collectively, as a district, we lost over six hundred pounds between, um, Thanksgiving, before Thanksgiving and right after Christmas. So that's exciting. Another benefit that we offer employees is, um, the Employee Assistance Program. Again, this is at no extra cost to the employees, but they have access through our EAP to counseling, uh, legal and financial advice and family resources. So here you can see the usage numbers for each category within our Employee Assistance Program. You'll note that these numbers are based on the calendar year. They don't have fiscal, their fiscal year doesn't align with us. So it's the twenty-two, uh, twenty, twenty-two year, and then you can see the two thousand twenty-three year on the right. Um, and, and we're excited to see these great increases in how many employees are taking advantage of this, especially in the counseling. I know you asked a question earlier about, um, social emotional resources for our students, but we also have this available for our employees to be able to access counseling that they need. Okay, now let's take a brief look at some of the feedback opportunities that we utilize. We talked about HR outreach in the Upbeat surveys and exit surveys. Um, we also give employees who leave the district a chance to, um, have an exit interview if they marked dissatisfied or teaching in another district on their resignation form. So I reach out to them and offer them that opportunity if they would like to talk with me and tell me more about their experience. We have the Tennessee Educator Survey that's deployed by, um, the Tennessee Department of Education. We have our School and District Admin three sixty surveys that give employees an opportunity to respond specifically on, for their supervisor and to give feedback specifically for their leader. School-level audits based on different feedback that comes in throughout the year. We have our Minority Mentorship Program participants. Communication groups for, for different, um, subgroups. We have our classified groups, certified groups, parent groups, and student communication groups. We also have other focus groups that Elizabeth Vincent in our Communication Department, she leads as, um, as concerns or areas of, of improvement arise, she will create that focus group and, and work with those individuals to get feedback. And of course, we have our collaborative conferencing. And also Dr. Luna Vedder and Dr. Huff do meet with CMCEA and PET each month. So we, we've seen our workplace climate feedback. We see it's improving. We've seen also that our retention numbers are improving, but we're still not where we need to be. So what are our next steps? Well, there are things that we want to continue to do. Um, in the recruiting realm, we want to continue to partner with universities. We also have a great Fort Campbell partnership and, of course, just community job fairs. Social media marketing efforts are going to continue. We also have our wonderful Grow Your Own pathway for our teacher residents. And as I mentioned earlier, our job-embedded licenses and our teaching permits. We also want to continue our recruit, our retention efforts. We're going to keep using that Upbeat data. We're going to continue our HR outreach program, our employee recognition events, and reviewing those pay scales and engaging in market analysis um, as we have been doing to make sure our employees are receiving that competitive pay. Some improvements that we're looking at moving forward. For my role as Employee Relations Specialist, something I'm working on is just simply, um, streamlining that process for feedback and how I get that data to the right leaders at the right time. So I have a lot of data coming in, and I just want to make sure I'm doing a good job of getting it, um, to the right people in a timely and efficient manner. We want to increase the frequency and depth of our discussions when we're looking at that Upbeat data and making sure that every school and every department is taking that data into consideration when they are making their action plans and reviewing and tweaking throughout the year as needed. Again, we want to increase those supports for our new teachers since we know we have so many new teachers that are on permits right now. Um, for our upcoming school year, our Instruction Department has repurposed five district-level positions to provide extra support specifically for new teachers and permit teachers. And then, of course, we want to, um, always increase our school and district leadership awareness of training opportunities for best practices regarding retention. Do you all have any questions for me tonight?
Mr. Nelson?
Uh, good evening, and thank you for that briefing again, uh, very informative and, uh, well-thought-out.
Thank you.
Just was wondering, um, you said, you know, we've got a, quite a few teachers that are leaving. Have you looked at the, uh, any of the demographic information as far as whether it's more males leaving or more females leaving? Or, um, you know, what is the sweet spot as far as retention? As far as, you know, do most teachers give it three years, six years before they determine if they're not going to, uh, continue on?
So we do have the ability to pull by, by those specific fields. I don't have that data, uh, handy tonight, but I will be happy to get that together and share that with you all.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayberry?
Appreciate, I appreciate your presentation tonight. Um, I want to say upfront, um, I really appreciate you going out into the schools, meeting with the, with the, um, teachers and members of the faculty there. And I love that you've been to all the schools, and I appreciate everyone. I know Dr. Luna Vedder does it every week and meeting members of the cabinet do, and I, I just appreciate that and love that. Um, I got a question with the surveys. You mentioned the exit surveys are anonymous, are the other surveys that way as well?
The Upbeat surveys?
Yes.
Yes, they are anonymous. Um, they're deployed in a way where the building can, can take that data and kind of look at, there are some features that, you know, will show, um, how long the employee's been there. So it can be, it can be broken down a little bit, but it's, it's a completely anonymous survey, um, for all of our employees.
Gotcha. One of the categories was compensation and career path. Can you elaborate a little bit on the career path part?
So I will defer, um, to Anthony. Yeah, go ahead, Anthony, thank you.
Oh, it works, okay. Um, so the items under that question, obviously, the compensation is, is pretty self-explanatory. The other items around career path, a lot of that does have to do with, um, kind of seeking opportunities for advancement. And so, um, as you know, there's, uh, a lot more positions for teachers and classified staff than there are administrative positions. So I will, I can foresee us always kind of going a little bit lower in that category, but it does ask about that, do you see opportunities for advancement within the district?
Okay, great. Um, on the exit survey data, the low categories were workload, morale, work environment. Is there anything specifically we're working on now to, uh, make those categories better? Um, or are we studying them now to look for the future?
Well, and I, I, that's a great question, yes. So they also have that open-ended response on the exit survey, which we added just this year. And it, it is, um, you know, it's kind of one of those things, be careful what you ask for. So if I'm going to give you an open-ended response, but it is very telling. And, and that's a great place where I've been able to pull and find key words um, and just a trend in those high areas because typically people will want to share, and that is the question. What is, what can CMCSS do better to support our employees? And so I'm able to pull that data as well. Um, and also pair that with what we're seeing in the Upbeat surveys with our current employees. And so, um, workload is a, is a lot, you know, and that's not the first time we've, we've heard that. We know that is, um, across the nation, a challenge. And, um, so yeah, we do have that, we're working on that. I know our instruction team is looking at a lot of just different options and exploring, um, workload and capacity and how things might be shifted to decrease that, that pressure and that workload on our employees.
Okay. Uh, and then lastly, employee recognition. Um, I'm just curious about this because one of my kids' principals is retiring this year and, and our, our community is sad about that because she's been there forever, uh, and we love her very much. Mike, could you go ahead and tell a little bit more about what we do for the retirements, um, of like long-term employees like that?
Sure, and I don't know, Melissa, do you want to speak to that? Or the, what we do for our employees when they're retiring? And this is my first year in this role, so I'm, I'm excited. I, I know some of what we do. Um, I'm actually working with Amanda Smith in our department. We, we have a retirement ceremony and they get to come and bring, um, a significant other. And they, you know, get to have a nice meal, and we have some words for them. And then Melissa, I don't know, I'll let you add on if you're, I'm doing great. Being new again, so I haven't actually attended one yet. Um, but I'm excited to, to attend and learn more about how we can support them.
Is that district-funded or is that school-level funded?
That's district-funded.
Okay, great. All right, thank you.
Mr. Patterson?
HR, you could use some of that money that Chris gave you with your large, large budget, I think. But, uh, my, um, might be out of line a little bit. I know in the military, when we checked out, or we had an exit, uh, moving on, you had to account for all your equipment and everything, turn it in. And, uh, to increase your fifty percent, uh, average of, of, uh, you know, shooting for a hundred percent, I didn't know if there was any way that, that that would be one of the requirements when they're turning in their equipment or whatever prior to moving on to retirement, another job, or whatever, and let that be a requirement that a, the survey would be initiated before the paperwork was, uh, processed to the future.
I will certainly take that note down and discuss it with, with my team. Um, moving forward to see, you know, we can explore that possibility. Thank you for that feedback.
Seeing the others, we thank you for that detailed explanation of what your new job is. And we're looking forward- is and we looking forward to seeing you in other settings.
Thank you.
Now team, we have a job to do. As you know, naming of elementary school number twenty-six is something that we decided that we want to be part of. Let me tell you tonight that we will not be voting, but if you have any recommendations, you can actually voice your opinion so that we can actually be ready at the, I think at the next meeting to actually vote on the, the name of the school number twenty-six. Do we have any recommendations? Mr. Nelson?
Mr. Vice Chair, I come forward with two recommendations that I've been given the names of. One being Jimmy Terry Elementary School and the other one being Sergeant Major Brown, Sidney Brown, correct?
Okay, would you like to elaborate or just, just those names?
Those are, just those, those names. I, so from what I've heard, what I've witnessed with Jimmy Terry, he was very active in the community and very supportive of young people and education. He did start his own Christian school here in Clarksville and he did run it with excellence. You know, he was very active in the community. He's been a leader. All the senior leadership knows him in Clarksville. Now Sergeant Major Sidney Brown also though, he has worked very diligently in the community and he was responsible for bringing the veterans that center here in Clarksville to prevent veterans from having to go down to Nashville for some of their care, for some of their treatment. He had been very active and he was also responsible for, I think, going down, supporting some national initiatives with the integration of the schools down Alabama. As a soldier, he was stationed in one hundred first Airborne Division and that was just one of the things that he's done, but he continuously worked in our community and to try to make it better for everyone.
Anyone else? Ms. Berry?
I have three, excuse me, recommendations. Mountain View Elementary School, just general, Fort Campbell is a mountain that does provide all of us this nation freedom. And then I have Birchwood Elementary, which is that location that the school will be in. In addition, as Mr. Nelson said, Sidney Brown, who served on the county commission and was very implemented, he, he implemented a program that helped us to get the veterans home here in Clarksville for veterans. I loved Pastor Terry as we all did and what he did for the Lord, but he supported private schools. And so nothing's wrong with that. But this is a public school, school that we're going to name. And so I'm just going to be upfront and honest like I always am. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Patterson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The two names, Brother Terry and Sergeant Major Brown, I know them both very well. When I was on the city council, I worked with Commissioner Brown at that time, fine gentleman. I know Brother, I knew Brother Terry more so than I did Sergeant Major Brown. He'd always come up. The man could do more push-ups for his age at one time than anybody I've ever seen. I've seen him doing on the pulpit, but every time he saw me, he'd always say, I love you, Charlie Patterson, I love you. Almost brings tears to my eyes, but both are fine gentlemen. Some of the comments I've gotten on different names, we had some great presentations last week on, on the freedom, on, on the word freedom. I, I, I heard from, from several people and, and I like, I like that word. And I was trying to find a synonym. I feel like with any, with any name or whatever, you could probably Google and find something that was derogatory. I was trying to find a synonym with the word valley and I came up with the word pass, Freedom Pass. And it, it just struck me and stuck with me and I shared it with some people. And, and then nothing against naming schools or anything after people. Again, Brother Terry, he has a boulevard named after him and I can't emphasize enough how, how much I love that man. But, you know, we have schools now named after individuals, Barstel, Norman Smith, Moore, Burke. I think I had one more, Burns Darden. And again, they're all, they're all fine folks. And, and yet I sit here and thinking, you know, we have a lot of important things that we could be doing instead of what we're doing right now, naming a school, which is an important thing. But I think Mr. Brumley and his committee worked diligently to come up with a name that we had with Freedom Valley. And whether a person doesn't like the word valley, you know, that, that's fine. That's your own feelings, but having served twenty-plus years in the military myself, that, that freedom, it just, it really, it really stands out. And, and I'm open for other suggestions to go with the word freedom, but I just, I like the word Freedom Pass. Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Mayberry, I'm sorry. I appreciate the community's feedback and I have the sentiment to the other board members that I appreciate the different names that have come forward. I personally knew Pastor Terry as well and he was a great man. Couple of names that I've received from the community that I feel like were solid names I'm going to put out there. One would be Jordan Springs Elementary. Jordan Springs is over there and the thought was Jordan Springs Jaguars. So we'll throw, throw that out there. Yeah, that was, that was the name that was brought forward. That was pretty good. Also, this one I thought was kind of cute actually, but it would honor Fort Campbell. But Old Abe Elementary, if you don't know the eagle, the screaming eagle, his name is Old Abe. So I thought that was kind of cute for an elementary school, so I'll put that out there. And then the name that was just recently given to me is also Valor Elementary. So that, to honor Fort Campbell. So that is what I'm putting forward.
Ms. Space?
I wish I had pushed my button before Charlie because we were thinking along the very same lines there with the word freedom. And naming a school, honoring an individual is the highest honor a school system can bestow. And there are certainly many, many worthy individuals in this county. In the past conflict and ill feelings have been created during, due to the exclusion of honorary nominations. Montgomery County just cannot build enough schools to honor all of its worthy individuals. And for that reason, I favor choosing a name that's uniquely representative of that individual community and, and then of that area. Then all three levels of the schools in that complex carry that very same name, such as Kirkwood and West Creek, Rossview, Kenwood, Northeast and Montgomery Central Complexes. Freedom Elementary would bestow that deserved honor and respect to the, our military community and would certainly be respectful to that population of this school location. And for that reason, Freedom Elementary would be my very first choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Patterson?
I don't know if you're going to let me speak twice or not. You know, you know, Ms. Space, just listening to you there, you know, just saying, I think, I think I heard you right that you said like Freedom Elementary. And, you know, we can forget the valley or forget the pass or whatever, but we still have freedom in there. And the, you know, again, you can, and we're not going to nickname Freedom Fighters or something like that, but I mean, like I said, you can pick names and, and like I said, I wonder why we're, we're here discussing this, but the, I, I like that. I like that Freedom Elementary. Thank you.
Thank you. I have only one recommendation for naming that school. And I knew this person well. She was very involved in what went on in Montgomery County. Not only in the school, but she served, I think, fifty years on the county commission. And then she turned around and she also served forty years as a teacher within the school system. And everything that she did was to try to make sure that children got a quality education. A lot of times she went unnoticed by the masses, but I think that this is one time that we can actually give her the honor that she earned as a real strong leader in this community. And she wasn't only known here in Clarksville, she was, she was known across the state of Tennessee. She was a mother, grandmother. She was a mentor. She mentored me when I came on the board and she was always telling me, Brother Garland, is everything all right in CMCSS? I would say, yes ma'am, everything is all right because you are here. She served many years on this committee that we have here. And that name is Letty Kendall. She was an educator, was a, she retired as a elementary teacher, but she worked in other competitions as well. And if any person, all the rest of them, I understand where you guys are coming from and I appreciate you. Everything that you said about the people that you nominated is true. But I say this is true also because Mrs. Kendall focused for over fifty years, whether it is as a county commissioner or as an, as an educator, was on the education of the children of Montgomery County. And that would be my only recommendation for this school number twenty-six. Thank you. Mr. Griffey?
I can't talk much tonight, but I'm going to talk a little bit. I'm not in favor of naming a building after anyone. I think that the idea of naming it for the community it represents is a better idea. It's next to a military base. So something along those lines, I think, is the wisest decision for this school. If the board wants to name it after an individual, I'd recommend Colin Powell because it recommends for the military, honors the military and the service of them, which I'm not for an individual. I like the freedom. I like the, the Jordan Springs even, and I like Valor Elementary. But if we're going to name after an individual, it needs to have a tie with what that area represents. And I think it would be Colin Powell would be the best example of that. Came from public schools and came out a general in the military, very successful person. Started in public education in the Bronx. And that's all I got voice to say tonight.
Mr. Patterson?
You're a pretty good chairman. Let me talk. I guess I'm getting old. Like somebody said the other day, you're supposed to respect your elders. I, I can't find any elders anymore and so I must be one. But I also worked with Letty Kendall. My wife taught with her her last few years at Ringo Elementary School, lovely lady, love her too. And agree with everything that you said that, that she is. Along with, with Mr. Griffey, I, I'm, I'm just not comfortable, you know, naming, you know, like a person. And, and I lost my chain of thought. There was one other thing I was going to say, but the, I'm sure we'll come up with a good solution next meeting.
I agree.
Thank you.
Next item on the Jennings County Commissioners, you have any comments?
Well, this, can you hear me? This is just a question for earlier. For as far as work-life balance goes for our teachers, I know a lot of teachers there, historically, a lot of them are women. Children, there's a lot of things to consider with that. What are we doing to create a better work-life balance for them? What are the initiatives that are very specific to that?
We'll get something sent to you. How about that? Because I, anything we, we come up with right now will just be a fraction of what we're doing. So I'd like the team to give you a more condensed version to make sure we don't miss anything.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. Do the board have anything else I'd like to say before we leave? Mr. Mayberry?
I just want to say my heart goes out to the family of Kim Ward. Got to meet with them this week. We're going to be holding the funeral services at Mosaic Church and we're happy to do so. But I just want to say, speaking to Mr. Ward, the grandfather, he, you know, it was a very emotional conversation and just my heart goes out to them, love them. Most of you guys know I'm a Rossig graduate, so my heart goes out to the Rossig community as well.
Mr. Patterson?
Thank you. A few, a few meetings ago, I mentioned the Snow Fairy. I believe that, that I was going to talk to the Snow Fairy and, and some people were concerned whether I had a real good connection with them, with the Snow Fairy. So I want you to know that she came through and I think she should get some type of recommendation for the job that she did by not letting us have snow the rest of the school year. Thank you.
I give up. Dr. Luna.
Good evening, board members. You may have already heard, but April is month of the military child. With twenty-five percent of our students being military dependents, it's wonderful to see all of our schools celebrating our military families. We encourage everyone to wear purple on April seventeenth for Purple Up Day. And at our formal meeting, we will be highlighting all of our incoming Purple Star schools in the district. Yesterday, our students donned their glasses for the solar eclipse viewing. We had parents who chose to view the eclipse with their children on the lawns of school complexes to experience this moment together. During school visits yesterday, we saw lots of moon pies and Oreo activities along with some very creative song lists aligned to the day. Next Monday, we are beginning testing across the district for TN Ready. I'm confident that our teachers and students are prepared. Finally, you heard the proposed budget for the upcoming school year. We will continue to advocate for employees. I truly do believe that the defining difference of our schools is retaining and recruiting the right people and getting them in the right positions. Our priorities will continue to focus on initiatives and dollars on people whenever possible. Mr. Garland, this concludes my report for this evening.
This meeting stands adjourned. Thank you.